May 11, 2023. We don't write today. But I quite believe this is the right day. And I make it clear to America, to do what we're supposed to do. One nation, one land, individual with liberty, justice, and tolerance. Thank you. Okay, we have a respectful flag noting of role Mr. Spiz as the county commission meeting tonight. Please note that for us, please.
And there is a form.
There is a form. So we have approval of the agenda for this evening.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for that.
I have a approval of the agenda from Mr. Honig and seconded by Mr. Turner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We need, I don't think there's any conflicts of interest from anybody on the commission. If there is, please say so in advance. Seeing none, we'll move forward. We need approval of the planning commission, regular meeting of 4:13:23.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes for the planning, regular planning commission meeting dated 4/13/23.
My second.
I have a motion from Mr. Noel to approve the minutes of the meeting of 4:13:23 and seconded by Mr. Ballard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Didn't we approve? We did approve.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did you miss that? Are you here?
For the test.
Sorry I said that. So we have now the approval of the minutes. We need, is there any body from the public that would like to speak on issues that are not on the minutes agenda? Now would be the time to do that if there was someone from the audience. Okay, I'm seeing none, so we're going to move on to commissioners' comments if there are any to be made at this time. And seeing none, so we're going to move on from that. We're going to go into the public hearing, which is the main event for tonight's evening of while we're here. And we need the presentation by the petitioner to start this off. No, we have to approve the public hearing opening when the petitioner is done. So you present your case.
Good evening. My name is Mike Kennedy. I'm a vice president of land acquisition with MI Homes. We have some new people here today, so just wanted to chat about MI Homes a little bit just for the background. MI Homes is a publicly traded home builder based out of Columbus, Ohio. I work out of the Michigan office, which is staffed with about 60 people. We've got about 40 years of home building experience in 17 markets in eight states. We expanded in 18 by buying pinnacle homes. We've been here since, and last year we were the third largest builder in southeastern Michigan. We're also awarded the Home Builder of the Year award by the HBA of southeastern Michigan last year. Locally, we're in about eight communities, and we've built three different product series. We've identified this property, and our engineer did, in our opinion, a wonderful layout. We presented before the board planning commission on February 23rd, and based on that, we wanted to add a couple additional restrictions on the property. And those were that no boat docks would be installed on the property. And the second was that owners of the residential townhome units within the property and their guests will be prohibited from using the property as a means of access to Waterstone Lake for boats and any other watercraft, and that we're willing to put that in the deed restrictions. So with that, I'll turn it over to my engineer, and he'll present.
John Thompson with PDA Group, representing MI Homes this evening. So I didn't come with a full PowerPoint presentation, because I thought pretty much everyone has seen this project before. There are no changes with regards to the plans than we've previously presented. Again, this is the formal part. Pursuant to the Michigan zoning enabling act, PA 110 of 2006, as amended and pursuant to all applicable provisions of law, we are requesting a zoning map, the zoning map, of the township of Oxford as amended to conditionally rezone parcel number 0421200-005 and -002 from local commercial to multifamily in order to construct nine attached single-family dwelling buildings totaling 45 units. So, as Mike just indicated, we had four conditions. When we first came, we came, we sat before you, and as a straight rezoning. And what we heard was people were concerned that if for whatever reason MI Homes didn't build the property, that the next guy coming in would then be able to build anything he wanted to within the RM zoning. So at the suggestion of the township attorney and supervisor, we came back and we added conditions. That way, the residents could understand exactly what they're getting, and there wouldn't be any bait and switch should they not build it, and that you would have a site plan attached as conditional rezoning. If for any reason MI Homes didn't build the site, the site would revert back to a commercial Your ordinance allows you to grant a rezoning of a property that is contrary to the future land use map if you find that the circumstances have changed to the point that satisfies the proposed rezoning. That's your authority, that's how the mechanism that you can use in order to conduct this rezoning. Under the master plan, both properties are currently designated as village commercial. Village commercial was designated as a small and local commercial development intended for day-to-day shopping. When the master plan, when Waterstone was master planned, they had this idea that they could do a node of commercial within the village of the residential. This idea, 25 years ago, never came to fruition. We see these properties sitting vacant, we see a spot zoning, we see that's incompatible with the way everything else built up. They had an idea, it just, it didn't work. So we're here to look at a different option. If you look at a buy-right option of what under the commercial zoning currently could provide, these two parcels could have over, between 30,000 and 40,000 square foot of retail and restaurant use. You would have the resulting noise, the smell, the light pollution, the traffic that would be afforded with that type of a development. You can see that on your screen now.
I'm trying to put it in one perspective, so excuse me, I'm just trying to get it a little larger so everybody can see it. Because I kind of did that, I can move it back and forth, I can't put it all on the screen at one time. So that's part of your presentation right there.
So we talked about traffic, and we heard from the residents at some of the previous meetings that traffic has been concerned, traffic bicycling, by cutting, they're cutting through the other roads, they're off a market. If you were to get a development that would be allowed by right under the current zoning of the local commercial, that would generate in the tune of 1,200 trips per day, 2,400 vehicles going up and down Market Street and cutting through the side streets per day under commercial zoning. The master, the master plan states that it is imperative to the township to set aside adequate area for commercial and industrial development. It is important for the township not to set aside an excessive amount of commercial and industrial land. So it is believed that, it is believed that currently the township does not have adequate population and traffic flow to support the additional commercial development in this area. And we went through a long explanation in the report provided, but basically, you can cite this example of Market Street, not being able to support the commercial shopping along M20, I'm sorry, you can see this along M24, Market Street primarily, M24, with the multiple vacancies and frequent turnovers that we're seeing in the M24 corridor. So trying to add more commercial into an area that can't support it further emphasizes why this zoning is the wrong zoning for these parcels. Under the proposed rezoning to multifamily, the single families will facilitate a transition between the non-residential districts and the lower-density single-family districts in the area. Downsizing from commercial to multifamily, limiting to 45-unit multifamily development will generate only an estimated 300 trips per day. That's eight times less than a commercial development will generate in an area where we're already concerned about traffic. From a density perspective, you've seen previous plans of this property come across to your desks. The ordinance allows 7.2 units per acre. We're proposing 83, I'm sorry, 7.2 acres, the ordinance allows, because it's a different zoning ordinance, the ordinance allows 7.2, of 7.2 allows 173 bedrooms. We're proposing 83. So that's less than half the allowable density under the RM district. So we looked at reasons for the compatibility and the harmony in order to give you potential things to look at in making this decision. So I'll kind of resummarize this. Over the last several years, shopping trends have changed. People are buying online, and the visits to brick-and-mortar buildings are less and less. The vacancies on M24 are evident that it's currently too much commercial to support the current residents. Rezoning this property removes a non-compliant and obsolete spot zoning. These parcels are consistent with residential zoning that abut the community along Market Street, and the master plan indicates that there is a demand for multifamily dwelling This development will also target the missing middle. This will be targeted towards first-time and down, and moved-down residents, allowing them to either come to Oxford or stay in Oxford when they don't want the half-acre lot that they have to maintain. The rezoning of the property does not unreasonably impact the adjacent residents, and the conditional zoning will lock into two-story townhomes with less than 50% of the density allowed in the RM district. With that, may I be to answer any questions?
Right now, actually, that is your presentation, and we are supposed to open the public hearing first for testimony.
Then I shall sit.
So you can take and relax yourself for a second. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing at 7:15, May 11, 2023.
I have a motion to open the public hearing this evening by Mr. Noel and a second by Mr. Ballard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now we are open for public testimony. Everybody, if you wish to get up and speak at this time.
Do you want to go over the three minutes?
Well, we would like, he's bringing up a good point. I see quite a few people in the audience. We would try to like to keep your comments to about three minutes, if you could, depending on what you have to say tonight, but I'm trying not to be redundant and maybe one of your neighboring people or someone has made a comment similar to yours, but you're welcome to speak. We just try to move it along as we can go.
I just had a quick question, Thomas.
Come on.
There were a couple of residents that didn't make it today that sent in letters.
I have two letters of record that I know of right now. That's the only two I have that will be read into the record.
Can you name those two?
Well, we're supposed to wait for you to do your public comments first, by rule.
Sure.
And I'd be happy to let those, they will be known when we read them.
Okay.
Yeah. Now we're open for public comment.
Hi, my name is Alex Flamasny. I live at 621 East Lake Trail. I feel like I'm at a high school presentation, but I feel that pictures, for me, definitely make more of an impact. So this is pictures directly from our house. I believe we are one of the only houses that receives the letter in the mail, because we live within 300 square feet of where they want to build these commercial, or, I'm sorry, residential townhomes. This is the whole entire, the lot that they're showing here from our living room, our bedroom, our kitchen, and then our backyard. So really, I mean, I feel like 300 square feet is just, I mean, think of like a football field. It's really not that far. So not only that, but I feel like it's 45 units means 45 families. And I, we moved to Oxford three and a half years ago for the tranquility, for the water, for the foliage, and this is, you know, if this is where we wanted to live next to apartment complexes, so to speak, we wouldn't have lived here. I have three young kids, they're seven, five, and four, and I just feel 45 families living in such close proximity is very nerve-wracking for me, especially with them being so little. I do understand that they said that, you know, they made addendums saying that no water access or boat docking, I just feel like that's unrealistic. You have no way of truly regulating who comes and goes from the lake. Right now, there's already signs that say, you know, no public access, no trespassing. I mean, like I said, I live right there on the end, and throughout the summer, you know, we see people coming in from, you know, the different subdivisions within the neighborhood with their kayaks, and we've had people unfortunately, you know, drive down our lawn and put their boats into the water from our side access. So I just feel like that's kind of an unrealistic statement. And I just, I hate feeling like putting houses like this that are for first-time homebuyers or people that want to downsize, that's great, but in the grand scheme of things, like that's affecting our property, everybody else's property that lives in the area, the home that just went up for 1.5 million right across the lake, like, what is that doing to their value of their home that they literally are in the process of finishing building? Like, I just feel like that defaces the value of all of our homes, and, oh, my three minutes is up.
A little louder than I anticipated.
That's fun.
If you could bring it to a conclusion, it would be good.
So I guess I just ask you guys, like, if this was your house directly next door, adjacent, if you had your children there with you, and they were still young and growing up, like, is that something that you would feel comfortable with, with having that many people eyeballing you at all times? Because if I can see you, you can see me.
Thank you. And I like the picture.
Let's keep them that way.
I live right across the street from them, and this is the views from my front yard.
Could you just identify yourself?
Oh, sorry about that.
Do it help us.
My name is Joseph Bigelow, and I live at 612 East Lake Trail, and I'm a combat veteran, and I'm currently Oakland County Sheriff's Deputy.
Thank you for that.
Yep. So, sorry about that.
No, that's all right.
These are the views from my front yard and from my front porch that overlook directly at where these things are going in. So just to give you guys a reference of what my speech is going to be about.
Okay.
So, when my wife and I started looking for our forever home in 2021, we looked for places that would benefit us and our children, who are six and five years old. Some of the main things that we looked for were quality schools, low crime, property values, sustainability, and the view. We looked all over Oakland County trying to find somewhere that fit where we were looking for, and we toured the home that we currently live in, the instantly fell in love. Met the criteria that we were looking for. Fast forward to today, and now my wife and I are starting to second-guess our decision to move here. For the last year, some issues have true inspired that have made us rethink our decision to move here. These issues have arisen by our local government. The main one is why we are here today, and that is the proposed development of the multifamily homes. These will be built directly by my home and affect us directly. The view from the front and right side of my home looks directly at the direction these buildings are being proposed to be built. While working for the Sheriff's Department, I'm able to see and know the direct impact of placing lower-priced zones in a more affluent neighborhood. The property values go down and crime goes up. More importantly, is the type of crime that arises, and they are violent. According to U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the types of violence include, but are not limited to child abuse and neglect, firearm violence, intimate partner violence, sexual violence, and elder abuse. I know for a fact that the majority of the calls at our first service that our department gets in Oxford is in lower-value home rates. I have also traveled around the world in military and for leisure. I've witnessed what happens when the local governments choose not to listen to constituents and do what they want. I saw it in Iraq and in India, where my wife was born and raised for the past first 15 years of her life. When the government stops listening to its citizens, it directly shows that you don't care about them, and you are going to do whatever you want. That's not how the government works. Government works for the people. I have attended the previous meetings pertaining to this issue, and one of the previous meetings, I overheard one of you board members stay directly outside. Every time I drive by this, it's an eyesore. To you, it may be an eyesore, but to the people who live here, us, it's a thing of beauty. After the horrendous and unthinkable tragedy that happened in November 2001, that caused so much trauma and everlasting damage to the citizens of Oxford, I ask that you vote no on this, and don't implement any more hurt, anger, or pain under the citizens of this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
I live at 6401 West Bay Shore Drive. I've been to all three meetings concerning this subject, so I'm not going to belabor any issues that have been discussed. I'm not going to even address some of the claims that have been made because they're so ridiculous, okay? We have potentially 2,400 cars a day that are going to come down the road, yet there's not enough interest for somebody to develop the property? Come on, that's totally conflicting. But anyway, the main issue that needs to be focused on is that this development, townhouses, does not emulate the character of Waterstone. Waterstone is a 1,200-plus acre development. It's got a 27-hole golf course, it's got 15 lakes, it's a planned community. It has no townhouses. Why are we even giving it this much attention? It doesn't fit. There's all kinds of property in Oxford Township where you could put this development. After all these years and all the hard work, this is an idyllic development. Waterstone is a model. Why do we want to muck it up? That's what it really boils down to. We shouldn't really be giving it this level of credibility, because it doesn't deserve it. It doesn't fit, period. Thank you.
My name is Jason Klingensmith of the 472 South Shore Drive, 18-year resident here of Oxford Township. I sit on the board, executive board of directors for the Waterstone Master Association. I also am the treasurer for the shores of Waterstone HOA, which I'm here representing tonight. We did submit a letter earlier in the week that I believe will be read into the record, but I just wanted to emphasize a couple of three main points here verbally for everyone tonight. The first, first of all, we represent 49 homes from the shores of Waterstone, and we are unanimous in our objection to this rezoning for a couple of key reasons that I'd like to state here. One, the density and architectural style are not aligned with the existing homes and community design, both on and directly adjacent to Waterstone Lake. For reference, please consider the new construction on the west side of the lake, where the developer made sure to align with the construction of the existing homes' styles, creating a more cohesive approach to expanded residential offerings. Number two, there is no way to prevent the residents of the proposed project from accessing the lake directly, from the property, nor prevent them from keeping and utilizing boats. Waterstone Lake is a private lake by the DNR standards, and there's no jurisdiction for them to operate under. Therefore, there'd be no way to enforce these deed restrictions that are being proposed. And lastly, most importantly, to me being a civil engineer, is the proposed project would require the addition of a stormwater runoff drain directly into the Waterstone Lake to accommodate the 15 residents located on the south partial of the land abutting the north shoreline. This is a captive lake that has no exit or drain, meaning anything that flows into our lake remains there in perpetuity. So even the most well-intentioned drain design will still have the opportunity for failure, whether due to human negligence or components or age. And there's a couple of studies that we listed in our letter showing the detrimental effects that they could have from a stormwater discharge into a small lake like this. So again, on behalf of the shores of Waterstone, I'd like to encourage everyone to read the letter in more detail, and hopefully, again, I agree with some of the other residents here at Oxford speaking in our objection to this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ed Rumsis. I'm at 457 Sound Shore Drive. I serve adjacent on the shore of Waterstone Ford. This developer doesn't fit in with the nature of these homes that you see around us in the pictures and the photographs. Recently, there's a home on the market right now for $849,000. These are proposed to be first-time buyer downsizing homes. As mentioned previously, these homes don't fit in with the cohesive nature of Waterstone or our development. I've been a resident for five years. I've seen our property values increase. Part of that is because we keep a cohesive nature of our homes, and I hope and respect that you guys will understand and vote against this proposal. Thank you.
Mary Ann Keynes. I'm a resident of the Stony Lake Village condos as part of the Waterstone community. And I just want to iterate within my three minutes that I unfortunately was not able to make the February 23 meeting, but you were kind enough to read the email that I had sent to you, Mr. Burbridge, as chairperson of the commission. And I just wanted to kind of reiterate those six points that I had mentioned. It does deal more with perhaps when we're further down the road, when we're looking at site plans, but I do believe that they're something we need to take a look at at this point in the stage of the game to consider if we should rezone in the first place. And the first point has already been brought out, that the fact that these 45 units have no basements, they don't have an option for a first-floor bedroom, all bedrooms will be upstairs, so they aren't really the clientele that we're looking, or the luxury level of type of townhome that we have within the Waterstone community, which has been said several times. My second point deals with the storm sewer and drainage. When we had looked at the plan previously, the presentation that was presented to us previously, we noticed that there were issues when it comes to the storm and sewer drainage and the impact on the lakes surrounding Waterstone Lake and Stony Lake in that regard. Third was, as part of the Waterstone community, they would have their master deed and their bylaws, and they would pay association dues into the master Waterstone Board. That allows them to have access to what we call our gazebo park area, and they could certainly take any type of canoes or kayaks to that area and access Waterstone Lake. So as was mentioned before, enforcement of these conditions are going to have to be really in writing and very clear and succinct, because, as you know- really in writing and very clear and succinct, because as you know, I have Commander Patterson on speed dial because, living off Lake Dules, I'm still living after seven, eight years with him on speed dial with trespassers on Lake Dules alone. We were going to take a look at the complex lighting as well, what kind of illumination would be in the evening for safety reasons, because they still had parallel parking along Market Street as an option, and I don't know if that still holds true going forward, but that was a concern as well. And then the establishment of a construction pathway for them to proceed down Market Street versus Stony Lake and how it would best and least impact the surrounding community. And finally, just before the buzzer goes off, I wanted to talk a little bit, we've talked a lot about the Waterstone Lake and the impact on Waterstone Lake, but I want to bring up Stony Lake. Stony Lake has not been brought up before and the impact this development would have on Stony Lake. There is a buffer, you know, the Boulder Point Golf Course, and I've spoken to Mr. Mike Seldon on several occasions regarding to this development. Their golf cart pathway would have to be moved, and you know, residents may infringe on the golf course greens, if you will, because there's just no way that you're going to have all these units, and especially if they think they can't go to Waterstone Lake, they're going to go to Stony Lake with their canoes and kayaks. They're going to walk across the golf course greens. They are going to go into Stony Lake. Stony Lake is a public lake, and they can access it through the beach area or through the boat launch areas. So there is access, but it's not direct access right from this development to Stony Lake. It has to go from them to go to those two outreach areas. And you know, it's just only human nature. We know what's going to happen once the developer's gone. They're going to have issues just like we have now with Lake Dules and the surrounding community and trespassers and what have you. And there's liability issues because it's hard for us to get insurance. People don't think of that, to get the insurance coverage for our complex. If they know that anybody can access this, it makes an impact on that. So I'm over my time. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the question, is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time? It's a public hearing. Yes, sir.
Paul Shield. I live at 101 Woodside Court. We moved here over three years ago because of the pristine area that it was. I mean, our son lived here. I visited here many times, and I really enjoyed how this whole complex is in Waterstone. It's a beautifully laid-out complex, the course, walking trail, and other things going on. And the homes are, you know, pristine, and you've got homes that really have a decent base value. And if you start putting things such as this, and I'm really concerned of our values, and also I'm just a little concerned, is this going to be low-income housing? I mean, I want to know if this is set up for that, because in reality, this area is not set up for that type of situation. I hear more and more about that happening now, where they're putting in developments for lower-income, you know, people that come in, and that does have an effect on the whole community. So I really be concerned about really downsizing and putting in a lower-grade building into our area. Thank you.
My name is Greg Graham. I live at 821 Cross Circle. I'm also on the lake. I just wanted to counterpoint something that was brought up by the engineer, and that was in regard to the, I believe the initial concept for the area that we're talking about now was more for, if you would imagine, a downtown area of a small, little community, right, where we would be able to walk up to a coffee shop or some other business to enjoy within our community. So I don't think that the argument about placing some kind of a Taco Bell or other restaurant in this area is reasonable, because we've seen that, you know, on 24, there's just, it's just not sustainable, right? So that's probably never going to happen, or was never even planned at the beginning. So I just wanted to make sure, not make sure, I just wanted to counterpoint that, the comment, and more relative to the traffic impact, because there is a lot of walking paths we do see, and we walk a lot in the community. So a good majority of the business would be done through residents just walking up and enjoying that type of a store, restaurant, shop, or that nature. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Don Belosik. I live at 569 South Shore Drive. My neighbor Jeff Felton sent a letter in. It's quite lengthy. I'm wondering if you could tell me, did you receive that in time for the cutoff?
I have a letter from Jeff Felton.
Okay, then I'll let that stand on its own without reading through it, but I'll paraphrase. He's strongly opposed. There's no means to enforce the restrictions, put in the conditions for lake access, and he urges the planning commission to reject the application. You know, I have a lot of words, I've been thinking about this a lot, as I know my neighbors and I have been, and it's absolutely kind of nerve-wracking, to be honest. Creates a lot of anxiety for us. You'd think you've heard some people say that. This is my third time talking about this topic, which I'm kind of concerned that it doesn't feel like our words are being heard. But one word I heard tonight from, I believe it was John doing his presentation, he said harmony. He used the word harmony as if their application to rezone was somehow in harmony with what's going on in our development. I fail to see harmony at all. 27 units lined along Par 3? No way. I just don't see it. 27 garage doors as you're driving down Market Street? It's not in harmony with our development. My wife and I married 30 years, lived in Troy, raised two kids, 25 years there. Great community. We were looking for something different. We came to Oxford. We found water. We found golf. We found running paths, jogging paths. It's absolutely a great environment for us to live in. We love it. And this is lowering the standard. It's settling. It almost feels like 65 units was proposed years ago, and somebody's come along with 45 units, and somehow that's a good idea? I disagree. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Anthony Verdura. I live at 568 South Shore Drive. I also am a Lakeside resident. I just want to be very brief in first saying that I obviously agree with every comment that all of my neighbors have made here tonight. They are my neighbors, my community. We're coming here to you to tell you that we don't feel that this development meets the standards of our current community. But I'd like to close in just saying one last item, and that is, MI Homes is here tonight, in my opinion, to make a pitch for a development which has one motive, and that motive is to pack as many units as they can into these parcels in order to make a significant return on their investment. I hope that you can see that we are making an investment in our community, and implore you to see that this rezoning does not meet what your community is standing for. We want to stand with our community. That's all I have to say.
Igor Vasessky, 596 South Shore Drive. I'm on the lake. I moved to this neighborhood because I fall in love the moment I saw the gazebo between the Market Street and Waterstone Drive. I use, I walk daily, pretty much over here, four and a half miles radius. And by looking at, today, I just saw this one for the first time. I go on the north side, I go on the south side, everything will be interrupted. I completely agree with everyone who spoke before me. I'm not going to go to the presenter because it has a lot of loopholes in his mathematics, because you cannot say, sir, you are going, we are going, the community is going to lose if they have a lot of commercial zoning versus this one. It's not your business. We live, we invested in this community, in this area, and we want to live peacefully. We don't want to have this kind of noise and all that stuff. I completely agree with everyone who was speaking on Waterstone Drive. And I think you really need to consider this, because this is going to hurt the way we live on a daily basis. Pretty much if this is going there, I have to walk in front of somebody's garage, in front of somebody's backyard, and the biggest thing is, I guarantee there is no way that you can control who's going to go on the lake, who's going to do whatever business in the lake. They're not going to police the, they're not going to invest on the security to control that.
Address us. I don't want to point at people directly with this.
Because they point, they represent, okay. I, that's all. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi. I'm at 641 West Bay Shore. I came in late, and I didn't really get up to speed in the weeks previous, but I do have one comment or one concern, and I don't know if they've addressed it or applied it to their plan, and that would be school buses and the kids, because that cutout is already a spot where the school buses sit and wait. They may not be there that long, but it still happens. And so there, it appears that they're not going to be a retirement couple or so that's going to be there. They're going to be people with probably young kids, of which we have a lot in the neighborhood, and we love them all. But if you start lining up kids for the bus on Market Street like that, it just poses a whole nother thought to throw into the mix of whether that's going to even work. And like I said, we love our neighbors, and one comment I wanted to make was, we live on cul-de-sac, a denette, and now our next-door neighbor has teenagers, and everybody's driving. So there's four cars, so there's four, they need four parking spots. The high school having these games over the weekend, and there's just cars, just on my little cul-de-sac. So I just didn't know if they thought about those extra parking spots that are going to be needed as these families with two, three kids start to, maybe just be somewhere to put them, never mind waiting in line for the school bus, which is a pretty busy street, even though the police obviously caution those things too fast. It's still a concern, unless they didn't think about it. So, thank you.
I live at 621 East Lake Trail. You've already heard from my lovely wife, brought up the pictures initially. As I sat here today, and obviously in agreement with all my neighbors, it is nothing new for you guys. You guys have heard this. I've been to all these presentations up to this point. You've heard these comments. Nothing's changed in that regard. Nothing's changed on MI Homes' behalf as far as how they're going to enforce our concerns or address our concerns in a fashion that will realistically work. I am pretty upset to hear that MI Homes thinks this is not going to negatively impact the surrounding communities. I'm the house closest to this. I'm the house most impacted by this decision. I know for a fact my value will drop immediately the moment that these homes are put in. More importantly, it will force me to make a decision prior to that of uprooting my family out of Waterstone or out of our house, and definitely out of Oxford if this is going to be pushed through by our community members who can't even look out for our own community. I'm a pediatrician. I help people for a living. That's what I do. I listen to the patients first and foremost. 90% of the time, I can already diagnose them just by listening to them. If I don't, if I have a problem with the diagnosis, or I have a problem figuring out what is going on with them, I go to the specialists who work in that field. I don't send a kid to a pulmonologist to figure out what's going wrong with their heart. I go to the person who works in that, who specializes in that. Why in this situation are you guys not listening to the community that is directly involved? The specialists? We're here. It's our community. We're telling you directly how it's going to impact and hurt us. I'm sorry if I get emotionally charged, but you're talking about ripping homes away from people, from families. You're talking about uprooting these three little kids who swim in that lake all day long. That cul-de-sac that they want to build on is maybe 60 yards, 60 yards from my end to the other shoreline. I own more property, lakefront land, than they own. And yet you want to give 45 families access to that? I don't care what you put in writing, there is going to be nothing to stop those families from jumping into that lake, from entering that lake with whatever they want to. And it's a small cul-de-sac on the lake. We already have eight drains running into that lake from the park. Now you're going to implement more coming from the street, coming from antifreeze, coming from cars, cigarette butts, everything else? I don't care what filter system you put in, who's going to manage it 15 years from now? Can you guarantee that my kids aren't going to have skin issues or skin reactions or pulmonary issues from swimming in the lake after you pollute it? You can't guarantee that. You have to look at the slippery slope here. More importantly, you have to look at the emotions of this community and how it's negatively impacting it. It doesn't take a person in medical school or an astronaut to realize that this is not right. All it takes is common sense and a good heart. We are Oxford Strong. We've been through so much already. My kids have been through so much already. I already have kids dealing with anxiety at five and seven from a shooting. Now they're going to have anxiety over losing the trees that they see deer come out of? Losing the natural wildlife as they're learning about Planet Day? Come on, guys. Let's be realistic here. I'm tired of coming to these meetings. I'm tired of seeing you guys. I'm sure you're tired of seeing me emotionally charged up here. You have the power to reduce all these people's anxiety. For three months, I've been just dealing with this, day after day after day. What am I going to do with my family? Am I going to have to pull my kids out of their school, out of their friendships, out of their home? Put yourself in my shoes. Make your decision based off of that. Thank you.
Do I see or have anybody else who would like to comment at this time? If not, I would look for a motion to close this. Oh, I apologize. Thank you. It's reminding me about two letters that I did receive in regards to...
According to our outline, we closed the public hearing, and then we talked about we have a place to review correspondence.
Okay. Thank you for that comment. Let me get back to my...
If I can stay in line, I'd like to close...
Let me get back to my agenda sheet.
I'd like to close the public hearing at 7:15.
A second. Mr. Knoll making a motion to close the public hearing, and Mr. Ballard seconding it. All of the papers say aye. Aye. Okay. Now, yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, do you have your outline?
I do have my outline. I'm sorry. I just, I had it upside down because I didn't have enough room to write minutes or comments from people on the other sheet I had. Sorry. I'm using the backside of my agenda. We now have the review of correspondence, which he's talking about. No, excuse me. We have comments from the township's consultants and staff next after this. So at this point in time, who's, you guys start with us?
Yes. Good evening, Commission. Morgan Mack Tammy from the Kelly Firm, which is the Township Attorney's Office. We are here today on a review of an offer by MI Homes for a conditional rezoning. This was previously before the commission back in February. There was an offer of several condition... There was an offer of several conditions. There was a vote by this Commission, as you all know. There are four votes needed in order to recommend the conditional rezoning to the Board of Trustees. At that time, several members of the Commission were not present, so we did not receive the requisite four votes. That being said, the matter did go before the Board of Trustees as it is required. In between the time that the Planning Commission voted on this, and it went before the Board of Trustees, the developer voluntarily offered several more conditions. As a result, the Board of Trustees voted to send the matter back to the Planning Commission, which is why we are here today. As you all know, I know you've gone through this several times before, but in a rezoning, the only way we can do a conditional rezoning is if the developer voluntarily offers conditions. That is the case here. So today, the developer is offering a number of voluntary conditions. Two of them were presented previously, back in February before the Commission. The first one was that the property may only be developed for residential townhomes and related accessory structures and amenities. The second condition at that time was that the maximum number of residential townhome units on the property shall be forty-five units. After the matter was voted on by Planning Commission, but before it went to the Board of Trustees, the developer offered three more conditions. Those three conditions are before you today. The first one of those conditions is that the maximum height of the buildings shall be thirty-five feet. The next condition before you today is that no boat docks shall be installed on the property. The third condition is that the owners of the residential townhome units within the property, their residents and guests, will be prohibited from using the property as a means of access to Waterstone Lake for motorized or non-motorized boats or any other watercrafts. The foregoing provision will be contained in the master deed and other building and use restrictions that is recorded with the Register of Deeds. I believe when this was previously before the Planning Commission, the Commission expressed some concern about what would happen if the developer did not develop this property in accordance with their proposal in a certain amount of time. The Planning Commission is able to put a time limit on these conditions. In accordance with your zoning ordinance, that time limit is twelve months. So if this were to be recommended to the Board of Trustees, and if the Board of Trustees were to grant this conditional rezoning, then the Township Attorneys and the developer would work together to create a development agreement. Or, well, actually, it would be a conditional rezoning agreement. And that conditional rezoning agreement would contain all of these voluntary conditions that I listed before you today, and would contain a time limit, that twelve months, in which the developer would be required to complete the development with those conditions. If the Planning Commission would like to, they can vote to recommend this conditional rezoning to the Board of Trustees. Alternatively, vote not to recommend it to the Board of Trustees. But regardless of your vote, recommend or don't recommend, the next step is that this conditional rezoning will go before the Board of Trustees. In considering a conditional rezoning, the Planning Commission should consider factors relevant to the petition. Those factors aren't listed in your zoning ordinance, so I'm going to defer to the planner, who is going to tell you what those conditions and those requirements should be.
Thank you.
Good evening, Megan Ness and Menach with Carlisle-Wortman Associates. I want to thank your Township Attorney for doing an excellent job of going over the process and what next steps are. And as she asked me to, I will talk about the standards that you need to use in order to judge this recommendation. The first standards are the goals, policies, and future land use map of the, and future land use map. That master plan is your twenty-year vision of what the township should be, and it has a map that has a color associated with each future land use category. In this particular case, the properties in question have been master planned for Village Commercial, which is in line with the C1 zoning that it presently has. So the rezoning that's proposed is not, is not in harmony or not in accordance with your future land use map, because they're, that would be, they're asking for a multifamily use, albeit limited. However, in the master plan, it's not just a future land use map, it is also the goals and objectives of the plan overall. And the residential land use goal is that the density, type, and character of residential development in Oxford should meet the housing needs of township residents while maintaining and enhancing the traditional village and resort style development found in the Oxford area. The commercial land use goal is that commercial development within Oxford Township should meet the needs of the township residents while promoting Oxford's unique character. There are, there's one objective under residential land use and three strategies that also would speak to this petition, as well as a, as well as two strategies on commercial. But they can basically be summed up in that there is an objective in the housing, that there's a range of housing opportunities and styles that should be available while remaining consistent with the character of the surrounding areas. That 2019 master plan noted that multiple family uses had increased between 2010 and 2015 almost doubled, but the land dedicated to multifamily uses accounted for less than one percent of the total township area. The conditional rezoning of the subject's properties to a well-townhomes could be seen as fulfilling the housing need for Oxford Township's residents if you felt like there was a need for townhomes. But again, the site is planned for Village Commercial, and that's not in keeping with the map. And in order to make a recommendation that's in conflict with the future land use map, you will need to make findings as to what's changed in order to justify that. So what has changed to a point? The applicant and in our letter, both of us stated that how shopping has, occurs, has changed. When we research back, this, this master plan designation shows up in the master, in the future land use plan as early as 2005, and it hasn't changed since then. However, the plan was updated in 2019. So again, if you are looking to recommend approval, you would need to make a finding and a statement, why this has significantly changed. If you were looking to recommend denial, then a good standard to use would be that it's in importance that the proposed rezoning is in conflict with the future land use map. Other, the two other standards that you need to use are site compatibility and also the surrounding area. And the townhomes appear, the, the site could be, appears to be generally physically compatible for townhouses. You could also say it could be generally physically compatible in terms of topography, hydrology, environmental features, for commercial. In terms of the surrounding area, the, if you look at the surrounding uses, it's majority residential, some single-family and some multifamily. So the, if you didn't have the future land use map to guide you, you might be looking at this and saying residential fit. However, from 2005 through the 2019 updates, there has been, that property has been future land use planned, and then as, I'm not sure how far back the zoning has gone, but it is now zoned C1. Be happy that, we would be happy to answer any questions, but again, the three standards are the goals, policies, and future land use map of the master plan, site compatibility, and the surrounding area.
Thank you. I know that was a little bit hard to put it all together, but it was nicely done. So... Having that, because we still have, let me, just give me a second to scroll it out there. We had this letter from the Oxford Fire Department, which is, was dated January 4th, 2023. They have no objection, they're concerned. We also had Sharp Engineering with his letter with no objections and his concerns, because everything that he would be looking at, there seemed to be capacity to do what the petitioner has presented. So I don't think Mr. Sharp's comment would be any more than that. Others, site elevation, sewer, water distribution, everything is compatible with what he was talking about for what we need for residential multiple. I'm not supposed to be the one making all the comments at this point in time, but I just want to make sure everybody kind of understood what the consultants that we have on record have with us, with the project summary. Now we have review of correspondence, which I think Mr. Noel was talking about for me to read into the record.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
If you would like me to read them, I have all three of them.
Oh, good. Would you do that, please?
Okay.
So we have, I only have two, so you have the third.
There's three.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this, the email is dated May 5th. We sincerely regret being unable to attend the May 11th meeting and submit the following. We had previously objected to the proposed townhouse project by email repeated below. Our opinion remains unchanged. Waterstone is a community of approximately twelve hundred homes, all of which are single-family and two-family duplexes. The proposed townhouse project simply does not fit the Waterstone community and should be rejected by the Commission. It is neither Waterstone nor the Township's responsibility to maximize profits for the developer by allowing a high-density project. Further, with Waterstone nearing build-out, this will become the last plot of land available for construction, significantly increasing its value. There is no need to jump into this project. Further, Waterstone is governed by a master HOA. The proposed lake restrictions run counter to the HOA charter as I remember it. This project hopefully falls under the requirements of the master development agreement and the Waterstone HOA charter requirements. I would be happy to see this property developed if for no other reason than to get rid of all the cottonwood trees, but the development should increase the value and desirability of the community, not diminish it. We encourage the Planning Commission to reject the proposed Waterstone Towns project. David and Sherry Gurbekki, 1138 Cross Street. The next one is dated May 8. Dear Commission members, I'm writing to express public comment to be included with the official record of the Commission meeting scheduled for May 11th, 2023. Specifically, I wish to express my strong opposition to the application slash proposal submitted by MI Homes of Michigan LLC to rezon property located on Market Street in the Waterstone Development for the purpose of developing low-cost multifamily townhome units. I do not believe this proposal comports with the master plan of Waterstone HOA and does not create any conditions which inure to the benefit of existing township residents/taxpayers in the Waterstone Development. I do not believe there are any possible sufficient and practical means to establish and enforce restrictions for lake access and usage by residents of these units, thereby significantly diluting the value of property rights enjoyed by current lakefront property owners. I further find it difficult to envision a plan that creates neutral or improved aesthetics around the lake or the neighborhood in general. Certainly, these factors will all operate to negatively impact property values of the existing residential properties in the proximate area of this proposed development. I urge Commission members to carefully weigh this proposal and reject the application for reasons including but not limited to those expressed above. The property should, in my opinion, remain zoned as local commercial, and any future development should add amenities, services, conveniences in the Waterstone Development to enhance value and quality of living for existing Waterstone residents. Thank you for your consideration of this taxpayer's perspective. Regards, Jeff Felton, 597 South Shore Drive. And this last one is dated May 9. On behalf of the Shores of Waterstone HOA, I would like to submit the attached objection letter reviewed and approved by all forty-nine of our households. We apologize for submitting this after the 5-5 deadline, but we're awaiting a few member votes that were on vacation. We would appreciate if you were able to grant us an exception and still include this for the meeting. We will have several members present, including members of the HOA board, John Huff. And this is the letter from the board. Members of the Planning Commission, the Shores of Waterstone HOA represents forty-nine homes located on the southeast corner of Lake Waterstone. This direct proximity to the proposal in question means that many of our homeowners will be some of the most impacted by your decision tonight. As such, we have taken a very serious and thorough approach to reviewing the proposal and all the information available on the requested zoning change. After numerous conversations, meetings, and review sessions, we have come to the unanimous decision to formally object to the rezoning request by MI Homes. This is supported by all forty-eight of our members, who share many of the same concerns and objections that have been presented by other residents in HOAs. Below, we have included our main objections to the proposal. Number one, the density and architectural style are not aligned with the existing homes and community design, both on and directly adjacent to Waterstone Lake. For reference, please consider the new construction on the west side of the lake, where the developer/builder made sure to align new construction with existing home styles, creating a more cohesive approach to expanded residential offerings. Number two, there is no way to prevent the residents of the proposed project from accessing the lake directly from the property, nor prevent them from keeping and utilizing boats. Waterstone Lake is considered a private lake by the DNR, and they have indicated they have no jurisdiction in which to operate under. While this concession is appreciated, there would not be a way to enforce it. Number three, the proposed project would require the addition of a stormwater runoff drain directly into Waterstone Lake to accommodate the fifteen residences located on a small parcel of land abutting the north shoreline. This is a captive lake that has no exit or drain, meaning anything that flows into our lake remains there in perpetuity. Even the most well-intentioned drain design still has opportunity for failure, whether due to human negligence or component age. Below are two result studies released by the EPA, including a quoted section from each. Used oil from a single oil change can pollute up to one million gallons of fresh water. Improper disposal of used oil, which includes oil leaking from cars, cars, contributes significantly to stormwater pollution. One ounce of household bleach requires three hundred and twelve thousand ounces of water to be safe for fish. And the second study, waterways and receiving waters near urban and suburban areas are often adversely affected by urban stormwater runoff. The degree and type of impact varies from location to location, but it is often significantly relative to other sources of pollution and environmental degradation. Urban stormwater runoff affects water quality, water quantity, habitat, and biological resources, public health, and the aesthetic appearance of urban waterways. As reported in the National Water Quality Inventory 1996 Report to Congress, urban runoff is the leading source of pollutants causing water quality impairment related to human activities. From our viewpoint, this decision can be broken down into two equally important components. Number one, can the parcels in question be rezoned as requested? This is simply a confirmation of compliance with any procedural rules and the correct and complete filing of any necessary applications. To the best of our knowledge, this has already been reviewed and affirmed. Number two, should the parcels in question be rezoned as requested? To us, this is now the sole purpose and domain of the public hearing. We would respectfully ask that the board members base their decision on the "should" aspect, so that it aligns with the input and voice of the residents impacted. We would humbly ask that each board member answer the above two questions independently and only vote to approve the motion if the answer to both number one and number two is yes. The residents of the community are part of the beating heart that makes up the culture and values of Oxford. It should be their desires, concerns, and aspirations that drive the future development of this community. Sincerely, the board and residents of the Shores of Waterstone HOA.
And I want to thank you for doing that tonight. Thank you. We are now open for commissioner discussion. If there is someone that has discussion, we'd like to start with that. You have the chair, I could lead off if you'd like. All right, Mr. Noel.
Bear with me on this. I have been part of this since Market Street, since you've been here twice now, as well as the board level. So I've walked this. I understand in my homes, they want a grand rezoning, they have circumstantial changes they want to make because it's been vacant for twenty-five years. I understand you folks, the density, designing the homes, access to the lake, stormwater runoff, home values. I went back to school and got out our master plan. And I got out the old master plan. And the master plan is an official document which establishes policies for future physical developments in the township. It's a long-range statement that generates goals and policy aims at the unified and coordination development of the township. It's a long-range statement that generates goals and policy aims at the unified and coordination development of the township. The plan serves as a general statement of the Oxford Township goals and policies and provides a single comprehensive view of the community's plans for future development. The plan also has visions outlining that are intended to guide the planning commission. Chomping around here. The plan talks about lakes and streams. A large percentage of the waterways in surrounding the township lakes has been plotted and developed with relatively dense single-family developments. The plan also has a priority. One area is located within the southwest corner of the township, portions of which have been designated as recreation-conservative land to ensure that they are preserved. In going through this, I remember how you started off. You started off with the request to rezonate, then you came back with the conditional that had two issues, and then the conditions grew to three issues, as we've all talked about. I don't believe this fits our community. I don't believe it's, I believe this is proposed as in conflict with our master plan, and I believe this site is not compatible for this use. For all the reasons that you folks have mentioned. Mainly, the reason that I'm looking at is you're going to have a piece of property on the south side. It's going to be within feet of a lake, and you're going to tell those folks that they can't use that lake. I see conflict daily with that. We already have lakes in our area that we have tremendous, what people have said, overcrowding, overuse, people coming on the lakes that don't belong on private lakes and vice versa. I don't see where this is a fit for our community.
By the same token, I would ask, would the community accept the current zoning and somebody coming in and building small stores, party stores, things where you could have people there late at night? Who knows what goes on in some of those areas? That's an alternative. We need to think about that.
Absolutely.
Yep, absolutely.
You know, one of the, you know, I hear everybody, what everybody's saying as well. And, you know, the property has been vacant for a really long time. And most of the residents have probably not seen, newer into the community. So everything has been vacant for, you know, that property is, it's been, it's a, you know, it's a, it's, the current views are beautiful, you know, because there's nothing there. It is a, you know, it's a sanctuary. It's almost like, it's a park. But at the same time, it is, it's not a park. It's not a conservation, and it has been vacant for 25 years. And the current property owner also has rights as well to be, you know, to want to redevelop it and want to rezonate and want to put something else in there. And thinking about everything and thinking about, you know, there's parcel A and then there's parcel B, right? There's two parcels there. And, you know, and thinking about, you know, listening to our, you know, listening to our council and listening to the standards and objectives that we have to meet, right? So one of the, you know, one of the first standards and objectives was, you know, does it meet the original vision? The original idea, and the original idea within Waterstone was to have something commercial there. You know, there was also an idea to also have a school within the community as well. But that never planned, you know, that never panned out either. And I don't think a commercial property will be panned out as well. But with that being said, you know, I do believe that there's a potential that there could be rezoning. But I see it as two different things. I see there's a parcel A and a parcel B. The parcel A, I don't think that the current proposed design would fit within, within the community. So I would agree with, you know, Mr. Noel here on this as far as that. B, parcel B, I can consider, could look into the potential of possibly having, potentially having also the townhouses there.
Are you talking about when you say parcel B is a northern property?
That is correct.
North side of Market Street.
That's because it's not directly on.
It's not clarified.
Yes, that is correct. But it's together, so, you know, it's, so it's not 100% compatible in those cases. And I do see the tremendous amount of conflict with, there's no way that I think that you could restrict people, anyone, from accessing that piece of property should the townhouses be developed.
Okay, Mr. I think you have comments. Do you want to make, I'm going to leave this way.
Yeah, 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 I do. I, I've made this comment before. And I'm going to make it again because I've been on this commission long enough where this is the third proposed development for these two parcels. And I totally agree with everybody that this doesn't fit. And I would not want to see this there. I also don't want to see a commercial development on these parcels either. But I don't live in Waterstone. If I did, I think I would orchestrate some kind of movement to buy these parcels. You've got enough homes, you can split the cost, buy these parcels, and then make them part of your common land or common usage, and then make them all part, whatever. And then you wouldn't have to go through this again. We won't have to go through this again. Everybody will be in harmony and everybody will be fine. But I brought this up, and the first time a developer came in with this proposal, and I made that suggestion, and it went, obviously went on deaf ears. And this, now we've got two more proposals since then. The property owner, as Mr. Bailey said, he has a right to do something with his property. But at the same time, when he took possession of it, he knew what he was getting into.
Exactly. Absolutely. So did I when I bought this community. It was C1.
I don't feel any compassion for the property owner, but I do feel that he has a right to develop it. So my concern, if somebody does come in with a commercial development, if this doesn't go through, then you're not going to have any choice because the law is the law. He comes in with his eyes dotted properly and his t's crossed properly. We're not going to have anything, you can complain all you want, but he's going to be able to, he or she will be able to do whatever they want with the commercial, long as it fits within the property's zoning.
We'll deal with that when it comes.
Well, that's fine, but you, you could make that not be a problem down the road, but that's my comment. I just, I needed to say this.
Well, we want people to make comments.
Yeah, I just, I needed to say this. That's it.
Mr. Bailey, do you have comments at the moment?
Yeah, I mean, I agree, the, the.
Oh, which is the property selling for?
This is, this is closed.
Excuse me, point of order.
I'm sorry.
Chair, can you call the council or the chambers to order?
We are in comment with the planning commission members at the moment, and that's where we have to keep these comments at this point in time. That's why, all right. We took the time to listen to your concerns, and now we have our concerns. I guess that's the way to put it. Go ahead, Mr. Bailey.
I mean, I, I agree with, with the other guys that, you know, the, the owner does have the right to develop it. But, you know, we, we've talked about the master plan and that being our vision for Oxford. And, you know, that's something I think we should take seriously that, you know, we've put a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of, this is where we want Oxford to be for the next 25 years. And even though this hasn't been developed yet, it could be. It could be for something great. I don't think this fits, and I think we would just be settling to have something in there. And, you know, I agree with everybody else. You're not going to restrict, I mean, nobody in their right mind is going to buy a house and be told, look at the lake, don't touch it. So how are you going to police that? We're not policing it now. So it's going to happen. I, I just, I don't think this fits. I, you know, I agree. I drive by it all the time and think, man, this is an eyesore. Something should go in here, but not this.
Do you have any additional comments, Mr. Turner?
No, I made my comments.
All right, I guess it's my turn, and I'd like to make a few. I've brimmed out there two additional times this week alone. I was in the mood to go along with the residential multiple rezoning with the idea of what potentially could be put on the property. And I looked at the surrounding area and said, we have multiple rezoning right next door with the Independence Village facility. We have somewhat of a multiple residential category on Stony Lake Drive. So we have some areas of compatibility already there. But then I did really listen to everyone. I wrote a lot of comments down tonight. I'm trying to pay attention to what people are talking about and what their concerns are as the citizens of the community. I'm also listening to the planning commission members. And I'm looking at what we have to have to present, what we would have to, to do this conditional rezonings for the findings of fact, and it might be very difficult to put those together in the perspective of what we'd have to do. Put this as a presentation of recommendations to the township board. And we are all inclined, as the planning commission members currently, I can't speak for Mr. Spiz, he's not here tonight, but in the past, to try to always look at the future land use map, which I just put up there. And when we read about it and what we potentially have, and I've been on this planning commission since '04, almost 20 years now. And I've been on the future land use discussion more than two or three times, almost every five years. And we are trying to adhere to that. It's important to listen to the people from the comments of what you've said tonight to put us in perspective on where we think we should be. And I tried to listen very closely to what everybody had to say. And I know what the petitioner has a right to apply for also. So I'm inclined to go with my mind now as the master plan was adopted for what we have in place currently and to keep this a zoning for more of a commercial C1 site. So I'm kind of going along with the rest of the PC members. I'm not sure how the vote's going to go tonight. But at this point in time, if there are no other comments, I need a motion to make something for a recommendation for a vote.
Mr. Chair, I appear to make a motion.
Mr. Noel.
I move to recommend denial to the Oxford Township Board of Trustees for rezoning of C1 local commercial to RM multifamily for parcels number 0421200002 and parcel number 0421200005. Based on the findings of the applicant, does not meet all the factors relevant to the petition pursuant to Section 18.3 of the Township zoning orders.
I have a motion made by Mr. Noel, and I'm not going to try to reread it, and supported by Mr. Bailey. And I would like to have a roll call vote if I could, Susan.
Sure. Ballard?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Honwick?
Yes.
I'm going, I'm going to go unanimous. I want to thank everyone that came to this meeting tonight to make their comments and make themselves proud.
Mr. Chair, can I ask our attorney to inform the, the group here what happens now?
I haven't cast my vote yet, but.
I'm sorry.
I do, I do, that is, yeah, I was trying to make a comment before I cast my vote. I'm voting yes also.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, how can I ask?
Yes, you may ask.
I'm guessing the question is, what happens next? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So despite the fact that this was recommended for denial, this still has to go to Board of Trustees because the planning commission is a recommending body. So this will be before the Board of Trustees will make a final decision on the conditional rezoning. I believe it'll be at the next township board meeting, but I won't know, of course, until the agenda packet comes out. If you have any further questions, feel free to let me know.
I fully understand that comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
That being said, and our public hearing has been held, and we have no other unfinished business that I know of. And we don't have any new business that I know of. So next would be communications from any committee reports that we may have. I have to tell you that I haven't been present in the community for about six weeks, so I haven't been on any, many meetings, agendas lately. We had one coming up, I know, for the ordinance review committee, and, and this is, I think it's the 18th now of this month. So anybody that has something that they would like to report to this date and time, please feel free to do so because I don't have any. I'm seeing none, so we're past that for the, the committee meetings. The next would be, do we have any reports from any of our consulting engineers, Mr. Sharp or Megan, or would you like to make comments?
There is not much to report. The ORC is going to meet on May 18th. Our firm and Austin Kelly Farm gave a training to the zoning board of appeals this Monday night. And then you do have a rezoning that's on your schedule for your upcoming, your second meeting in May, which was the rezoning that's proposed at, for the recreation, for the, associated with the recreation department. So if you all can mark your calendars for two weeks from now and be here because we have an action item.
Cheryl, was there anything else? Thanks.
You didn't even get her to comment. You're just shaking her head.
I'm going to respect Cheryl's choices.
Thank you. Mr. Kirk, do you have other comments you'd like to make? I tried to keep it peaceful for you.
Yeah, it's a pretty simple during the rezon.
I thought it did good. I thought it did good.
It did just fine, Mr. Berger. Just a few things that you've probably seen out in the community, a lot of stuff that you have approved in the past. You've seen that the Taco Bell has broken ground out there by the Chase Bank. So that's all under construction right now. You've got the development in Manitou Hills that you approved, which was 18 homes. That's, they're building homes down there right now. You've got your marijuana properties that are starting. You've got the one down where the old gas station used to be. And I believe that they started out on the McLaren site, and maybe you've just been today. Some of those developments are waiting on some permits and things, but they are moving along and.
And actually, the documents came in for the old McDonald's site.
Some revised documents today?
I just looked at the documents for plan reviews.
For the building?
Yesterday, for the building.
Yeah.
And I know they're moving forward. Someone thought maybe they weren't moving forward, but they appear to be moving forward.
We're still working through some stuff with the site, but yeah, they're moving through all their urbaning process. Go figure, big hangups with M.DOT and so forth.
Right.
And Eagle, those are, we've been fighting those for a while. Let's see, what other, are there any other, I guess, questions that you guys have as far as the developments that are going out there? We have a couple that we've got some pre-amps for. I'm not going to bring those to your attention at this point, but there is additional developments that are, you know, forthcoming to you guys.
Are we still looking at diligently with the property that's on the north side of Drainer Road and the east side of Glastby?
North side of Drainer, east side of Glastby, or.
Well, it's in Oxford Lakes.
Or Oxford Lakes Drive.
So you go, you go east.
Oxford Lakes Drive, that's, yes.
Is that what it's called, Oxford Lakes Drive?
Right there.
Or you took, or you took Glastby to the south side?
Yes.
I apologize.
So they'll be, they'll be coming forward with, with the residential plan in there, and they're proposing, it'll really have some townhomes and some single families.
There's a multiple, kind of a blend, right?
Yes.
Okay. How many, you know the unit numbers there right offhand?
I don't want to misspeak in front of all these people, Tom. Get me something that come out with guns blazing at me. And then down East Drainer Road, you know, across from across Camp Oaklump property.
Yeah, yeah.
That one I do know. That's 80, 80 lots down there.
80, 80 blocks that'll be developed?
80 units is what the last proposal that was.
Okay, and is that moving forward right now?
Yes, it is.
So we still have a lot of potential on the residential side.
You got a good mix of stuff coming in. You got your commercial, tends to be more along M24.
Oh, yeah.
Not in Waterstone right now. And, and then, yeah, you do have some commercial as well.
Thanks for your comments.
All right, thanks.
I guess at that point, that we're looking for in German, I have German, I think about, close enough to 830.